Community Development Human Services Committee Meeting to Order. I am Jason Winston, Chair of the Committee. Uh, I am joined by my colleagues. All to my left, Councilmember Bakhtiari, Councilmember Andrea Boone, Councilmember Wes Morland, and Councilmember Norwood. At this time, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second? Wes Morland being through. Wes Morland being, I mean, Wes Morland.
One moment.
Boone is an I.
The vote is open? One moment. The vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The agenda is adopted. And five, that would be five yays, zero nays.
Alright, thank you. Um, at this time, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? A second by Bakhtiari. Please open the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. The minutes are approved.
Thank you. This does take us to the public comment section of our agenda. Um, each speaker will come to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Uh, we'll do a gentle reminder, um, when you have about 30 seconds. Um, our first speaker, Speaker is Ms. Henry Jordan.
Give not to swear to God to everyone that's here. For whosoever shall deny me before me, and him will also deny before my Father, which is in heaven. Matthew 10, chapter 33, verse. Jesus constantly calls for an open confession of himself by his followers. James, give to know what Christ has done through me, and you agreed with him. You told God you don't desire Jesus' gift, and the money he created through me to operate a work. He that works to see shall not dwell within my house. He that takes his life shall not perish in my sight. Psalms 100, chapter 7, verse. Three causes for praise: The Lord is good; his mercy everlasting; his truth endures. You dare tell God not to be good, not to have mercy, and his truth not exist for me? Jesus' gift operate for his glory; and in justice do not glorify him. I will only destroy all the wicked from the land, that I may cut off all wicked doers from the city of the Lord. Psalms 100, chapter 8, verse. God hates it and desires for us to please him. There are three calls to serve: Make a job for Noah, say the Lord, and come before him with thanksgiving. And a man's foe shall be of his own household, say Matthew 10, chapter 36, verse. Therefore, a single act of denial does not make one unworthy of being a disciple; but refusal to confess Christ at all eliminates one from being a true follower of Jesus Christ. Corruption and fraud do not glorify Jesus. James, give, actions do not be of holy families; and neither desire to marry me. We do things, we should do things to please Christ, because we live in on his time. It's what we owe him. He made us to serve him and not our flesh. Our flesh can never deliver us like Christ can. His Spirit dwelling in us is power to obey him and resist the devil. Thank you for listening and obey Jesus.
Thank you. Uh, our next speaker is Judy Yee. You'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Judy Yee, and I'm with Trees Atlanta, an organization that has been working to protect and improve Atlanta's forests since 1985. We're celebrating 40 years of doing this work in this city. And one of the results of this incredible work of, of preserving the trees of our city is that our, our identity is tied to it. Not only our identity from a visual sense, but from a measure of our health and well-being. One of the reasons that our city is so positioned to be, um, prepared and more resilient to the oncoming impacts of climate change, um, increasing temperatures, the heat island effect, et cetera, um, is because of the wealth of trees that we have in this community. When the Tree Protection Ordinance was written in 2001, we lived in a different world. In 2025, we live in a situation where our tree canopy continues to decrease, um, by percentages every year. Since 2008, when our first tree ordinance, uh, a tree, uh, assessment was measured, our canopy was leading in the nation for large state, uh, large cities at 47.9%. In the last evaluation in 2018, it was 46.5%. We suspect that when the 2003 measure comes out, it will be 45%. What this means is we're losing the equivalent canopy of Cascade, Cascade Springs National Park Clearcut every single year for the last 10 years. We encourage the council to evaluate the tree protection ordinance that is on your desks, um, right now and move to find ways to enthusiastically endorse it. There's been some progress, especially around increasing the tree recompense, um, fee, which has not been changed since 2001, which has been greatly undervaluing the true cost of replacing the trees that are, um, removed. And in addition, great, uh, and more improved tree protection, tree preservation, and, um, priority treaty recognition in that ordinance. However, in order for an organization like Trees Atlanta and our supporters to fully put our shoulders to supporting the passage of the tree protection ordinance, which we very much would like to do, there are feasible changes and tweaks to the ordinance around, um, how much of the tree trust fund can be used for staffing? And the, the right amount of, uh, waivers for affordable housing. Affordable housing is important, but to give 50% or 100% affordable housing waivers for not proportionate, um, representation of affordable housing in those developments seems disproportionate and not quite, uh, adjusted correctly. The other issue that we have is the offset approach for public tree removal. We think it's a dangerous precedent to remove public trees without the appropriate replanting for the public good. We hope that you consider these recommendations that Trees Atlanta has provided to the committee.
Thank you. Um, our next speaker, uh, forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Delil Anthony?
Hello, my name is Delil Anthony, and I am here on behalf of a grassroots tree advocacy organization called The Tree Next Store. We've been in existence since 2006, and our sole purpose is to advocate for a better tree ordinance. And I personally have been involved in every single attempt we've done to rewrite the ordinance. And really up until now, we've had amendments made, but we haven't had a wholesale rewrite of the ordinance. Now we do. This morning, we were actually meeting with Commissioner Prince, and we are this close to getting an ordinance that while not perfect, I think everyone can live with, and hopefully will be better than what we've had to date in that hopefully we will start saving some trees. Because last we saw, our rate of tree loss had doubled over the last four years. So we are losing a catastrophic number of trees. Now, what I'd like to address today is the ordinance 2501129, in which, uh, Councilmember Marcy Collerover Street has asked, uh, for a waiver of the tree ordinance as it exists today for all public projects. And this, we feel, is a bit excessive, extreme, and it's really jumping the gun. We've had the same ordinance in place for what, 24, 25 years? And public trees have fallen under that ordinance, and the city's been able to get its work done. We're only asking, what, another month? Because our understanding from Commissioner Prince is that this ordinance is going to come before City Council on April 21st. And to suddenly exempt the city completely from the tree ordinance, I think is going to be extremely bad looking for the city when everyone else is having to wait for the new ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our last speaker for the day is Laura Dobson.
Hello. Um, my name is Laura Dobson, and I live in Peachtree Hills. And, um, I'm here to ask you, I'm actually here to beg you, not to approve the ordinance that Councilmember Overstreet has introduced in terms of exempting public infrastructure trees from recompense or replanting. Um, this particular subject matter applies to Peachtree Hills specifically in terms of the Beltline coming in next to Peachtree Creek. On the EPD application, the Environmental Protection Division application that the Beltline submitted to encroach on the 25-foot buffers, estate stream buffers, the Beltline themselves admitted in their application that flood mitigation would be reduced after their project. We suffered during helane, boat rescues, condo destruction, car destruction along Peachtree Creek, specifically in Peachtree Hills. If this ordinance were to be approved, it would mean that the Beltline could remove, and I, these are their answers from an EPD question air. They would remove 269 healthy trees in the 25-foot state buffer, and more importantly, 582 healthy trees in just the Northeast Connector Trail 1. They would be allowed to, to remove those healthy trees with no recompense and no replanting. They could break Peachtree Creek and not fix it. This further applies to a PATH project that is going through Peachtree Hills Park that was just disclosed in last month's, this month's MPUB meeting. Atlanta Trails. The PATH Foundation and the Parks Department have proposed to remove approximately, possibly 35 old growth trees in Peachtree Hills Park. This would allow that project to take place with no public input, no recompense, and no replanting. Peachtree Hills has really suffered the Beltline progress. We've lost local business. We've lost generational owners already. I am asking you, please help us protect the path to a better environment in replanting and recompense. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you very much, and thank you to everyone that signed up for public comment today. Uh, that does take us to the presentation section of our agenda today. Uh, we did have three presentations. Um, our third presentation from the Fort McPherson Local Redevelopment Authority is a handout. Um, so colleagues, you'll have a handout from them. Um, um, so that leaves us with Atlanta Beltline and In-Town Care. So we'll start with Atlanta Beltline, Inc., CEO, Mr. Clyde Higgs.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Good, good morning.
Members of the committees, wonderful to see you all. First want to start off to say, my name is Clyde Higgs. I'm the President and CEO, uh, for Atlanta Beltline. But I also want to recognize my colleagues in the audience. Jill Johnson, who is our fearless leader for, uh, Government Affairs, and also Bryson Levesque, who also works in that department. Uh, it is my pleasure to be with you today. We have a number of slides to show you today. I'm not going to go through all of these, uh, in dirty details, um, but lots of good information to, to share. Uh, you probably read a little bit about Murphy's Crossing, uh, in Oakland City and Adair Park recently. Uh, we are happy to announce that the Beltline team is moving forward with entitlements, uh, for that site. And just for those that don't have history for, for Murphy, uh, this is a site that we acquired through Invest Atlanta probably in 2014. And that site is probably worth $35 million to date. And I think when we acquired it, it was roughly, you know, less than $5 million, uh, all in. So significant growth, uh, there. But we're excited to be moving forward with that, uh, with that site. Uh, we have moved on from the developer that we selected as a finalist. Uh, we started this process in 2022. Uh, but in the benefit of community, we decided to, to move forward uh, for a number of reasons. Happy to, to answer those questions if, if I can later on. And then you also may remember me discussing our land acquisition strategy for, for Beltline. Uh, over the last four and a half years, we have amassed, uh, nearly 90 acres of land for future housing affordability. And so as we talk about deep, permanent, long-term affordability, we all know that ultimately you need to control the land. And so that has been kind of our role in this affordable housing conversation is amassing land across the, the Beltline. So this site that you see here, this is what we lovingly describe as our Pittsburgh Yard Site. Uh, almost 14 acres of land in the Pittsburgh community. Uh, and this is a community that is asking and needs some, uh, dire attention. And you may remember, in 2021, we completed the first segment of the South Side Trail uh, in Pittsburgh specifically to give it some attention even ahead of, of other segments. Uh, we all know that we're in the throes of completing the rest of the South Side Trail, but this was one of those ways that we were trying to inject some energy specifically into that, uh, community. Uh, this is just kind of a conceptual plan of what it could be. It would be a mixed-use development, uh, housing, a focus on livable wage jobs. And you can see to the north of this slide, that is where the existing South Side Trail Segment 1 of the Beltline, uh, is. And again, without going through all of the, the dirty details about trail construction, uh, we are in a pretty solid place with regards to, uh, trail construction. What you see to date on this slide is roughly about 11 miles of Beltline that have been completed, uh, for the 22-mile loop. Uh, this represents kind of a new mindset for us. If you were to rewind maybe six, seven years ago, you know, we complete a section, uh, Councilmember Boone, we'd wait a few years and wait for a grant to come in. Now we actually have the ability to walk, chew gum, and whistle all at the same time. Mayor, you know this, we are very active in Buckhead. We're excited about this as well. Uh, but one of the things that, that I am concerned about is on the recompense side. And if there is potentially a barrier for us to finish the, the loop, that is one of the things that we're trying to think through. Like, what is a fair solution on the recompense side? And so happy to talk about that as a potential solution for, for us. Uh, happy to behave like a private entity in many ways where we can actually pay into that fund. So again, we're open to solutions there on the recompense side. But this time next year, uh, we will have almost 18 miles of continuous trails uh, in the city of Atlanta for, for Beltline ahead of FIFA World Cup. So this is really a vestige of what happened with a special service district that was passed almost four years ago uh, that allowed us to, to pull forward about $100 million uh, from the SSD coffer, uh, philanthropic funds, uh, the Beltline TAD. So again, we have amassed almost $400 million so that, again, we can walk, chew gum, and whistle at the same time. And so this is what you'll see, uh, as we move forward. Uh, we're in the throes of finishing the last segment of the West Side Trail Segment 4, uh, going north from Washington Park. Uh, we're actually ahead of schedule. So technically, we will be substantially finished with this in, in May. Blows my, my mind. So this is a shout out to, uh, the design and construction team at the Beltline for, for doing, uh, significant work there. And, uh, and Councilmember, uh, Jason, this is, uh, getting closer into your neck of the woods, but literally segments 2, 3, 4, and 5. Uh, we continue to make significant progress there. Segments 4 and 5 will be finished with that, uh, the third quarter of, of this year. And I remember us having, uh, the groundbreaking ceremony for that, but just, uh, exciting times. South Side Trail represents for us in many ways kind of this, this holy grail of trail construction, because ultimately what this is going to do is connect the East Side Trail to, to the South, or to the West Side Trail. So lots of movement, uh, there. Uh, excited that we're moving forward in, in Buckhead in a very aggressive way with, uh, with the Northwest Trail. And for those that are listening in the audience, Northwest Trail represents almost four and a half miles of future Beltline Trail. Uh, this represents perhaps one of the most technically challenging segments for us is because you do not have existing rail for us to pull up and construct Beltline. And so we've enlisted also the, the help of the PATH Foundation, uh, to help us advance that. Uh, but moving forward, uh, and also, uh, Councilmember Norwood, we, we are literally in the throes of about to, uh, install that bridge, uh, there. And so whenever you get a chance, uh, please let us, uh, host you and so you get a chance to take, uh, take a look at that. Also, another little known responsibility for, for Beltline is on the complete, uh, street side. And so we are in the throes of finishing the, the final pieces of the POTS, uh, streetscape project. It will be an access point, uh, there to, to the East Side Trail. And then also, we have finished the, the last pieces of the RDA Streetscape Project and also, uh, that access point. And also, in April, uh, Councilmember Dozier, uh, we are going to host a groundbreaking ceremony for, for Anoda Park. Uh, this is roughly an eight-acre, uh, park, uh, that continues just to escalate in price. And so we had to, like, literally draw a line in the sand and go ahead and start. Uh, we've hired a construction manager at risk that will kind of give us a top-line price so that we can manage finances there, but very excited about, uh, starting on, uh, Anoda Park. And then we also continue to improve, uh, the pump track, uh, the bike park, uh, at West Side Park, uh, now known as, uh, the Shirley Franklin, uh, Park, uh, on the West Side. Uh, so just exciting times there. And just real quick on the affordable housing side, this again is a shout out to, uh, our housing team and then all the agencies that think about housing affordability, uh, in the city of Atlanta. So many people said that it couldn't be done, that we would not finish the 5,600 units of affordable housing that we needed to do by the end of 2030. Uh, we're not out of the woods yet, but if you look at this slide right here, over 4,100 units, uh, in the, the tax allocation district, uh, due to IZ that the mayor, uh, advanced some time ago, uh, Atlanta Housing, Invest Atlanta, our private development partners. Uh, this past year, we beat our affordable housing goal by almost 90%. Almost, so just let that sit in for a minute, almost 90%. And again, people said, oh, you'll never be able to reach these. But again, because we are working in concert, uh, a lot of efforts have been made there. And this is, uh, kind of a slide here you can look at, uh, kind of our deal flow, uh, Edgewood, or Inglewood, rather, uh, the inclusionary zoning, the impact that it's had there. But, uh, but a lot of good progress there. And then also, we've been pretty successful in securing, uh, Lytech, uh, for, for some of our future sites. And we also made, uh, a substantial investment into Weston Mall, uh, that was acquired, uh, recently through Invest Atlanta, AUD, uh, and, and Beltline. And then real quick, on the economic development side, another unsung hero department for, for Beltline in making sure that our small businesses really get an opportunity to thrive because of the Beltline. Really is the lifeblood of what we do. And one of the things that we're focused on as we look forward to, to FIFA World Cup in 2026. And again, Councilmember, uh, Dozier, thank you for coming out and supporting this, uh, this event. But to make sure that our small businesses have access to the largest that's coming for, for FIFA World Cup in 2026. We hope that that headline says that businesses on the Beltline after FIFA World Cup leaves, that their businesses increased, you know, 300%. We, we want a significantly positive headline, but you have to prepare for that. So we've hired, uh, a consultant to help us think through that, to help our small businesses, uh, think through that. So we'll host a number of conversations for Beltline, uh, businesses and how they can take advantage of FIFA World Cup. But also, on the arts and culture side, we are happy to announce that on the eve of the 15th anniversary for, for the Beltline Lantern Parade, that we're going to host it again on the West Side, uh, on May 3rd. So folks that are interested, please come out and, and, uh, enjoy that. Uh, before the pandemic, we actually reached, uh, about 70,000 people that would come out for, for Lantern Parade, uh, celebrate, uh, giving back to our great city. And, Mr. Chair, that, uh, represents my presentation, and I am happy to, to answer any questions that you all may have.
Alright, thank you very much, uh, for that presentation. Uh, we'll start with colleague, I mean, colleagues' questions. We have enjoyed my Councilmember Jason Dozier, and so we'll go ahead and kick things off with him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Clyde. Just, uh, no questions, just a couple of comments. Just want to say, I am very excited about Anoda Park finally breaking ground. Um, I'm hopeful that we can get all the dignitaries that we expect to, uh, uh, that we've invited to that event, just so I can welcome them to District 4 and, uh, say hello. But I'm really excited, the community's excited, and looking forward to, uh, the collaboration going forward to get that built and, uh, get it activated. Uh, this other, uh, comment is, I look forward to seeing y'all this evening. I know, we're gonna have a big discussion about, uh, Murphy Crossing, uh, with SubArea 1, uh, larger conversation. I hate that I won't be able to stay for the whole event, uh, but I'll be looking forward to seeing y'all this evening, uh, over at Lincoln White.
Yeah, thank you for that. And so that should be a substantial community conversation. And we just want to talk about just that area in general. So obviously even beyond Murphy, but the opportunity for a future infill station uh, right there is going to be important. And by the way, as well as we talk about transit, uh, we are running kind of two independent, uh, studies by these consultants to help us to, to understand from a, from a mode perspective, kind of what makes sense, uh, for Atlanta. But that's something that's taken a lot of real estate in all of our minds is the, the future transit. But, but appreciate you being, uh, willing to come this evening. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Councilmember Norwood.
Yes, I wanted to just check with you on, um, the bridge over Peachtree Road, um, that GDOT is, we hope, still on board to do, because that's the final connect for your 22 acres.
Yes.
22 miles, sorry.
22 miles, yes. Thank you, Councilmember Norwood, for asking that question. Uh, I met with GDOT on last, or maybe two weeks ago, and it feels like we are all aligned there. And so, uh, Commissioner Russell McMurray has been fantastic in being a partner there. And, uh, but if something changes, uh, trust me, you will be one of the first people that we let know there. But it feels that, like, we're aligned at this point.
That's grand. That's grand. Thank you very, very much. Um, and that, I just, I appreciate all your work throughout the entire city. Thank you very, very much. This is very exciting. I've been around since the first time the Emerald Necklace book was published.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
No, thank you, and thank you for your support of our acquisition of 1145, that site there. I know that was definitely yeoman's work for our team. Uh, but again, just thank you for your support of Beltline. And I know that you're going to be, uh, out soon blowing the horn for, for our race there. So, uh, so I expect to see you with some Jays on and ready to, ready to run.
Um, you won't see that, but you will certainly, you will certainly see me there as a cheerleader, which is what I like to do best.
Amen to that. Amen to that. Amen to that. Amen to that.
All right. Again, just thank you for being here today. Just really excited about the progress, especially with segments two, two, all the way to five. Actually, your cover photo of your presentation, I did, I walked there with my family on Sunday. So even my kids are super excited. The ramp was there, seeing all the progress. They had a friend that lives on the other side of the trail, so they can't wait to be able to see it open and be able to walk over. I also just wanted to highlight, you, you highlighted the housing highlights of 2024. Of the 569 affordable units of housing, 454 in my district. And I am super excited about that. So looking forward to continue to work with you. Obviously, we got a lot of work to do around the entire seat of Atlanta. But District One is excited about what's happening. So thank you all for your hard work.
Absolutely. You've been a fantastic supporter and you're obviously a board member for, for Belt Line. But we're excited about getting that, that four and five delivered in this fall. So appreciate your support. You've been great for us.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
All right. All right, everyone. We have one more presentation. In-Town Cares will do their quarterly update and we'll welcome Brad Schwers.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Brad Schwers, Executive Director of In-Town Cares. Really appreciate the opportunity to come present to y'all this quarter. So we are an organization, our mission is to prevent and reverse homelessness and hunger in In-Town Atlanta. One of the great ways that we have grown our homeless outreach work is in partnership with City Council and the Mayor's Office in our place-based or neighborhood-based homeless outreach work. We, I think folks might have seen this before, but we take a five-step approach. This is the approach that the Atlanta Continuum of Care has adopted, but it's engaging people kind of on their terms where people live, hopefully building trust with them to the point where they will enroll in our program, which is the second step. From there, we help them navigate through the system, acquire their IDs, birth certificate, social security card, all of their documentation, healthcare, medical care, veterans benefits, things like that. Hopefully then move people into appropriate permanent housing, whether that's permanent supportive housing through the Atlanta COC or veterans housing, or maybe even family reunification. And then the fifth step is we help to stabilize folks so that they can get the support they need once they move into permanent housing. The, I want to talk a little bit about, so what the, our five step, that's the kind of process we take with our clients or potential clients that we engage. But part of what I think has made this project so successful is the way that we engage multiple stakeholders. So we want to talk a little bit about engagement as well as communication and education and how that approach has been taken. So on the engagement side, as I mentioned, our clients, our main clients are people experiencing homelessness. We do that long-term engagement work where we get to know folks and hopefully build trust, bringing in, you know, for instance, medical care, showers, things like that, that, that people desperately need. So that, that remains our number one constituent. But we also are trying to build trust and rapport and relationships with other stakeholder groups like businesses, neighborhood associations, NPUs and whatnot. So the, so one of the things that we do is on a regular basis, hold information sessions. And I'll talk a little bit about what we do in those, but we want to get out there in these different communities. We're now in five council districts. And so meeting with the faith leaders, the community leaders, the business leaders to educate folks on the work we're doing, also the kind of bigger picture work and kind of what they might see and maybe not see in terms of our work in their community. And then finally, we also do door-to-door canvassing. This started with our East Atlanta partnership where Michael Nolan, who's our case manager, will just walk to businesses, walk to the bagel shop, walk to the pizza shop, get to know the businesses, hear from their perspective, what it is that they, what, what they want to see, what help they can then give, can give to us, to their, their unhoused neighbors. In, in terms of communication, education in these, in these sessions, we try to tailor our, our communication to the different communities. We, a, a large part of what we're doing, kind of in a, in a way that just hopefully educates folks in a more comprehensive way, but talking about both national trends, state, national statistics, trends on homelessness, to kind of put people, to put our work into a larger perspective, but then also educate people on what the homelessness ecosystem looks like. It's very complex. Oftentimes folks might be very interested in helping their neighbors, but really have no idea what that looks like, how that fits in. People say, hey, there's an apartment right here. Why, why can't we just get this person in here? So we explain about the continuum of care and the different partnerships and the different work that the city's doing throughout the, the different neighborhoods. We also do program updates and best practices. We, for instance, our team and, and most of the teams around the city employ best practices like harm reduction, housing first, trauma-informed care. So we practice those every day with our clients. But we also educate the community with workshops, flyers, forums, and meetings to try to tell people what it, what it is we do when we engage with somebody who has, is almost guaranteed has experienced trauma. So how is it that we approach folks? How is it that we take the time to learn, to learn where people come from, to try to understand some of what they've been experiencing in order to learn that trust? So not only kind of explaining our work, but for folks who do want to be involved in the process, say, a, a business owner who's gotten to know someone who must sleep behind their business. But here, here's maybe some tips to, to engage folks so that they can be a part of this ecosystem that is helping folks out. And then finally on that, we, we provide education on kind of who to call when. So we, as, as we've mentioned before, work very closely with PAD. We let folks know that, you know, when, when, when to call PAD. So if there's someone who you don't want to call the police, but someone experiencing homelessness, call PAD. They can just do real-time response, be, be there within 30 minutes. If someone is breaking a window, like if there's a violent crime, please call 911. But if you want a long-term engagement, if you want to get someone out to start to get to know somebody and hopefully walk them through the process, give us a call. So in all of our neighborhoods, we have a dedicated line where folks can call us, but then again, have that information about when to call who, when to, to help their neighbors in need. The, and then we, we report out, we're very, our work and, and everyone around the city, we're very data-focused. We, we like to say that we use our head and our hearts. You know, we're a very compassionate group. We have folks on the ground who are very skilled at getting to know people who have, who've probably had a bad experience in the homeless services system. So we're very compassionate, but we're also very data-driven. So we, we collect all kinds of data on the number of clients enrolled, engaged, navigated, documents obtained, medical care, things like that. So just letting folks know who are the different stakeholders. Here are the things that we report on. Here's how, maybe you, you continue to see the same, the same people who might be sleeping outside. But what, what you might not know is there are four steps that they need to take to get off the streets, and they've taken three or four of those. So trying to give some data to, to the larger picture so people can understand the process even more. And then we've also hosted things like Narcan training, which reverses opioid overdoses, medical first aid, and things like that. The, so we, we recently, in conversation with the Mayor's Office, were able to expand our work from our initial four districts. We've added a fifth, a fifth set of neighborhoods that we're working with. We've also adjusted our model a little bit over the last year. Tracy Woodard, who is one of our incredible, she had been a case manager. She's now the program manager of this program. So she both supervises the team and also has a small caseload of folks who might have particularly high barriers. She's very skilled at helping people overcome those barriers. We've also added a halftime housing support case manager. As I mentioned in our five-step model, as we move people into housing, sometimes people will, will get to know their housing case manager, who's, who's part of their voucher that they're moving in with. Sometimes that, that handoff is, is very kind of quick and easy and, and quick trust can be built. Sometimes it's more of a process, and so we have a staff member who helps people in that transition to their new home. As I mentioned, we have expanded the team initially for full-time folks, and now we have six and a half. The original work was in Districts Five, Councilmember Bakhtiar's district, Virginia Highland, Morningside, Lindbergh, Beaufort Highway area. District Six, which is District, Councilmember Wan's district. Councilmember Winston in your District One, we've been working focused on Grant Park and Lakewood Heights. And then Councilmember Dozier in Mechanicsville, West End, Cooper Street, earlier in the year, has been our focus. As I mentioned, we have expanded also into Kirkwood, Little Five Points and some of the Reynolds Town neighborhoods. So we're excited to do that work. And we are potentially looking to expand into Sweet Auburn. I'm sure folks are still aware of the death of Cornelius Taylor, who we, this is the kind of long-term engagement work that hopefully can avoid deaths like that in the future. Finally here, the, the work that we're talking about is very much aligned with the Atlanta Continuum of Care's work and in particular, the downtown rising. As we all know, FIFA World Cup is coming. Georgia State University is in the midst of a, a big downtown revitalization. So all of our work that we're, that we're doing here is very much in tandem with the efforts downtown, as we've been talking about Josh, with Josh Humphries and the Mayor's Office, kind of talking about a halo around downtown. So none of our work works downtown specifically, but it works in most of the neighborhoods that kind of surround downtown. An unfortunate part of working to engage folks and close encampments is oftentimes, sometimes people will move into shelter from an encampment. Sometimes they'll move directly into permanent housing, which we would love to happen. Oftentimes people are displaced and, and go to another neighborhood. And so again, our workers are working in those surrounding neighborhoods and will hopefully be able to engage those folks and not have them lose touch with the system. So that's, I, I, that's the end of my presentation here. I do want to take the opportunity to introduce y'all to Shona Shaw, who is our new Director of Home Services. This is week two for her, so ask her all the tough questions right now. No, but please, happy to, happy to answer any questions.
All right, Brad. Thank, thank you and very nice to, to meet you. We'll start with questions from colleagues. Councilmember Boone was first in the queue, so we'll go.
Yes, thank you for this very well-done presentation. What are your plans for Southwest Atlanta District 10 and 11? I know the last time we, you had a presentation, we talked about some of our hotspots on Peyton Road, Fairburn Road, the Hamilton Road Quarter, which is in District 11, and the Cascade Road Quarter. We did speak with you regarding those areas as well. What are plans and what can we do to get some movement in Southwest Atlanta?
Thank you, Councilmember. We, where, where we're at now is we are looking to kind of secure renewed funding for this project. Our funding for this pilot here, which is a 12, now 15-month pilot, is coming to an end at the end of this month. So we've been in conversations with the Mayor's Office about expanding two more neighborhoods. Right now, our, our resources are all tied up in, in the neighborhoods where we're already working. We would love to talk about getting a dedicated outreach worker into some of the neighborhoods you, you mentioned. That would be, we, we'd love to expand the program, but that would be a part of that larger conversation.
So I would love to sit with you and see what resources, because I think we talked maybe a year ago about Southwest Atlanta District 10 and 11 as well.
Yeah, we, the, the, the project, again, we, the, the current, as, as currently funded, we don't have Districts 10 and 11 in our project. We'd love to talk about doing that. For us, that would be adding a case manager, which, which we're happy to do, but we'd need to work with council, the Mayor's Office in order to do that.
Well, I definitely want to meet with you regarding this project and also members of the Mayor's Office regarding 10 and 11.
Okay.
But thanks for this good work, and we want some of that over on our side of town.
Well, thank you. And we, we want to be there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Boone. Next we'll go to questions from Councilmember Bakhtiar.
Thank you. You know, I'm a huge fan of In-Town. First, I wanted to address Councilmember Boone. That's why we did the million dollars in the, when we authorized it. We have to wait for the administration to allocate those funds that we all authorized, because the intention of that money, what Brad is talking about, is we, that's why we did the million dollars, was to assist with the programming so we can get people out to 10 and 11, so we have the funding for it. So, and when that meeting happens, if you're open to it, I'd love, I'd be happy to sit down too, to show you how we built the model in East Atlanta. So to anyone who wants to do that, I'd love to be a resource. I just want to, again, applaud the efforts. This type of grassroots work is on the groundwork, boots on the ground. And I think the big, the biggest key component that is missing. You know, we've talked about this, about building trust and having to continuously do that in some of our most difficult areas, which takes time. So, I mean, y'all have done a tremendous job in the areas that you're already in. We're really excited to, the neighborhoods in my district are super excited to see this expand. I'm really excited to tackle Sweet Auburn with you all, Shona. So I'm looking forward to our sit-down when we have it. And I'm just, I said this to you before, I'll say it again. I believe that In-Town and this model has all the potential to help in homelessness in Atlanta in this decade, long-term, holistically and sustainability. And I believe our city can lead the way, and it would be thanks to organizations like yours that are on the ground. And I also just wanted to say thank you for showing that this is not a replacement for PAD. This is not a replacement for COC. This is not, this is supposed to be in partnership. We need a diversity of tactic. And all of those, all of these pieces coming together are imperative to tackling this goal. Not, not one agency can do it, but y'all are a critical part. So my guess, my main question is how can we continue to help you expand and better advocate for this? Because this model is incredible.
Yeah. Well, again, thank you so much, Councilmember, for your support. Yeah, I mean, we would, we would love to, we'd love to talk about funding going forward. I mean, I think that's, as we've, as we've mentioned, starting with four folks, adding some folks to the, the project. We'd love to continue, we probably have room to add three more case managers. So we'd love to talk about how to do that. We've got partnerships in addition to the, the COC and PAD with groups like Mercy Care that does street medicine work. There's a group called Feet on the Street that does mobile shower trucks. So yeah, it, it really does, it takes a village. We're, we're happy to be a part of that. And yeah, we'd love to talk about funding to, to do that, hopefully for, you know, the next year or two and beyond.
I, I mean, I think that we have to come to terms with the fact that no matter how we look at this, every city in the country is going to be spending millions of dollars tackling homelessness for the foreseeable future. We know that's the case with ours. And what I appreciate about this program, and I think what we have to focus on is like, one, we're going to have to spend that money. But this targeted approach and this accountability of these dollars and understanding how things are spent, rather than blindly throwing dollars at the situation, also sets you all up for success. We have to be active partners at the table. So to whatever degree I can make that happen, you know, you have me 1,000% in your corner. Homelessness is a hill I will die on over and over again. And Councilmember Boone, I want to make sure I do everything I can to help get this over to Southwest Atlanta, because, and I know they want to get there too. So whatever I can do to help fight for that, because we want to make sure that it's on the West Side as well. So I know I didn't even ask you any questions, but I just wanted to say, I mean, just thank you.
Well, thank you for your support.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Bakhtiar. Next we have questions from Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like my colleague, I don't have any questions, Brad. Just wanted to say thank you for all that you do. I know you were singing Tracy's praises earlier. She's, don't tell her, don't tell my other constituents this, but she's one of my favorite constituents, as I say into a mic and on camera. But she's been, always been phenomenal in supporting our unsheltered population across my district. But I do want to also, I've seen the praises of Cody, who's been doing direct work with our office, with the District Four work, y'all have been doing it with West End and Mechanicsville. He's been amazing, he's been responsive, he's been very communicative with folks in our community who have challenges with our unsheltered folks in their, in sometimes literally in their backyards. And I just want to say, he's been a phenomenal asset to uplifting this work, and so I want to give him a shout-out as well.
Thank you. Yeah, that's Cody Wallace, one of our great case managers.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Bakhtiari?
Sorry, I just also, I forgot to thank the team and your board, the people that are supporting this work. Your team is extraordinary. The board, I love meeting with them there, and you have a really incredible team backing you, and you're only as strong as the people who support you. So just very grateful to the case managers and to the In-Town team for the work they've done. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, and I'll just second that, just saying, excited to have Deja Stokes, who is now working in District One, so really excited to kick, kick things off there as she works to build relationships with our own house community in that, in that area. And so thank you all for your hard work. Let us know how we can continue to support you, and appreciate you coming today for your quarterly update.
Great. Thanks so much.
All right, have a great day. All right, so this takes us to our regular agenda, so we'll start with the consent section of our agenda.
25-01138, in ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into a memorandum of agreement for a term of 12 months with East Atlanta Business Association, Little Five Points Business Association, West End Merchants Coalition, Virginia Highland District Association, and Sweet Auburn Works respectively to support and encourage participation in the Atlanta Main Street Program for the purpose of providing funding in an amount not to exceed $12,000.00 each to East Atlanta Business Association, Little Five Points Business Association, West End Merchants Coalition, Virginia Highland District Association, and Sweet Auburn Works, and to authorize the Chief Financial Officer or his designee to transfer funds to East Atlanta Business Association, Little Five Points Business Association, West End Merchants Coalition, Virginia Highland District Association, and Sweet Auburn Works in an amount not to exceed $12,000.00 each to be paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. That takes us to our regular agenda. Ordinance for second. That takes us to ordinances for second reading. 25-01117, in ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee, waiving the requirements of Section 2-910 of the Atlanta City Code to retroactively authorize and ratify the City of Atlanta's submission of a grant application for the Livable Centers Initiative Study Grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission in an amount not to exceed $200,000.00 in order to conduct a LCI study at the Ashby Marta Station transit area and for other purposes.
Ms. Porte?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. So with the Ashby Marta LCI grant, it's just to retroactively authorize the application, which was submitted February 28th, to the, to Atlanta Regional Commission's for the 2025 Livable Centers Initiative Grant Opportunity. This grant, if awarded, can, will be applied to create a connected, walkable, safe, and more transit-friendly Ashby Marta Station in the areas surrounding the Ashby Marta Station. Department of City Planning plans to work closely with Vine City, Washington Park. LCI study pursuant of ordinance 09-0943 and 15-0-1262. This grant will not exceed $200,000 and requires a 20, an additional 20% matching fund. And ARC will potentially award that, that $200,000. And legislation will also have to be created to accept that funding once we get the word sometime in May.
Any questions coming in from colleagues? Councilmember Dozier?
Sorry, last but not least, press. No major questions about this as a broader initiative. I'm fully in support, and I'm happy to make the motion to, to approve. Just a quick question with the scope of the LCI study that y'all are looking at. I know there's been some conversations in the community and in broadly across folks that use the Marta system. Would the fact-finding and information-sharing and the community engagement work tied to the LCI potentially inform renaming of Ashby Street Marta Station? I know Ashby Street hasn't existed in some time, and I, I don't know if Councilmember Amos had this conversation.
Yes, he has, yes.
But I'm, I'm curious, the scope of this particular study could inform that?
I mean, it, it, it could. We had conversations with Councilmember Amos about this grant opportunity, and he mentioned that as well, so yes.
Okay, just curious. And I'll reiterate my motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. I'll second. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote closed, five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you.
That takes us to item number three, 25-01126, in ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, authorizing the City of Atlanta to execute an agreement with Community Foundation of Greater Atlanta, retroactively effective from January 1st, 2025, and ending on June 30th, 2025, which shall detail the actions of Community Foundation of Greater Atlanta in support of the Early Childhood Education Investment Program. To ratify the services provided by Community Foundation of Greater Atlanta, all funds shall be payable from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, council. Yes, this program was in partnership with Georgia's Early Education Alliance for Already Students to make capital improvements in repair and renovation grants for the needs of our community and early childcare centers around Atlanta.
Any questions coming in from colleagues?
Move of approval.
Got a motion to approve by Councilmember Boone. I will second. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
All right, thank you. And just to our speakers, if you don't mind stating your name, just for the public record.
Kenu Mitchell, the Program Director for Youth Development and Education in the Chief Policy Office.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
That takes us to item number four, 25-01128, in ordinance by Councilmember Mary Norwood, authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed $50,000.00 from the District Eight Moving Atlanta Forward Discretionary Fund Account to the Department, excuse me, Department of Parks and Recreation and for other purposes. The request is to hold this item.
Yes, motion to hold.
Got a motion to hold by Norwood, second by Westmoreland. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. Councilmember Winston, how do you vote?
Sorry. Aye.
The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays. This item will be held in committee. That takes us to item number five, 25-01128. May we have a motion to bring forth the substitute? The caption changes.
I'll make a motion to bring forth the substitute. Is there a second? Second by Norwood, if you can please open the vote.
One moment. The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you. In ordinance by Councilmembers Marcy Carrey Overstreet and Destin Hillis, as substituted by Community Development Human Services Committee, to exempt all City of Atlanta public infrastructure projects administered by the City of Atlanta's Department of Watershed Management, the Atlanta Department of Transportation, and the City of Atlanta's Department of Enterprise Assets Management from Chapter 158, Article 2 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, the City of Atlanta Tree Protection Ordinance, until a new tree protection ordinance is adopted by the Atlanta City Council and approved into law to provide that notwithstanding this exemption, that the city shall contribute to the Tree Trust Fund for the protection, maintenance, and regeneration of the trees and other forest resources of Atlanta. The replacement value of any trees removed in excess of the trees replaced in the course of any such public infrastructure projects according to the recompense formulas applicable thereto contained in the TPO to provide that, that where any public infrastructure project shall cause the need to remove trees from private property, the portion of the project impacting private property shall be subject to the site plan review process as set forth in Division 3 of the TPO and for other purposes.
Deputy Chief Staff Pace.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the CDH S Committee, Theo Pace.
Mr. Pace, I have just talked with the author of the paper, and so I have some information. Can I share that first?
Can I finish introducing myself?
You may.
Theo Pace, Deputy Chief of Staff, Office of the Mayor.
Mr. Pace, thank you for your indulgence. I just talked with Councilmember Overstreet, and we discussed the idea of having a site project-specific waiver rather than a blanket waiver, and she is very amenable to that. And so I would like to make a motion to send this forward to Finance Exec tomorrow with no recommendation, so that those changes can be made tomorrow.
No, I appreciate that. The administration has been meeting with Councilmember Overstreet. We know that there are a number of public safety projects specifically in her district, the Zone 4 Police Precinct, as well as Fire Station 31, that have been held up because, quite honestly, the city and our partners with Trees Atlanta have run out of public space to plant new trees. And so this has slowed down some of our projects within the city, within the Moving Atlanta Forward, bomb programs as well, and some other projects in some other council members' district as well. And so I do have Commissioner Prince with the Department of City Planning to answer any questions as far as how the new TPO would handle these different type of public infrastructure projects, if you all have any questions.
Well, what I just heard you say is a fire station in her district and a police precinct in her district. So that's two. And so I know there is one in Councilmember Hillis's district, that's three. So it's whether it's three or it's whether it's 30. And I think for us to open the Pandora's Box for a blanket waiver would be a lot of administrative work and a lot of monitoring. I would much rather do a specific waiver on a specific project where we know what we've got, do it so that it does not impede public safety, because I am building a new fire station in my district. I understand the need for that. So I would love to see this get amended and revised tomorrow.
Okay. Whatever their pleasure for the comedians.
Councilmember Norwood, Councilmember Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief, since it sounds like this is going to change again in finance tomorrow. But I want to make sure I understand the, what's currently in front of us before we vote to do anything with it. So the paper that came in, and I don't know who this directed to, somebody in the room, maybe, the paper that was read in last Monday would have exempted the city from essentially all aspects of the TPO. And the substitute in front of us exempts the city from the inch-for-inch planting requirement, but now requires us to pay recompense, which we don't currently do.
Right. And I believe it also removes Department of Parks and Recreation, which was in the original ordinance, is one of those departments that would be exempted.
All right, thank you.
We have the concurrence of the author to work on this and to look at having this become very project-specific, which I think will give us comfort across the city versus not knowing what's coming at us.
Okay. So any questions for Commissioner Prince or Deputy Chief Staff?
May I?
Sure.
Thank you. I want to ask the community that came and spoke today if they've had an opportunity to look at the substitute.
So I'll just reiterate, this is a dual report. It's going to Finance Executive Committee, where two of the co-sponsors are on that committee. So I think in hearing from Councilmember Norwood, unless there is any desire to move it forward with no recommendation with substitute today, that there will be further, further discussion in that Finance Executive Committee tomorrow.
I am understood all of that, and thank you so much for those who did work on the substitute. I will say that I am hesitant, because this has been such a long, this has been such a long time coming, and my district obviously is very invested. So I'm okay forwarding without recommendation, but I would also like time, I think we, I just want time to go over this with the community a little bit, so that we, I make sure that we aren't. My worst fear is that we rush it and that we don't write a great paper and we're back here again. So understand, Councilmember Norwood's going to help educate me more on this, and I will ensure that I speak to the community as well before tomorrow, so we have that understanding. Thank you.
All right, and I also had enough to add, Councilmember Hillis as a co-sponsor?
Yes, he's been added as a co-sponsor.
Okay, perfect. So I'll make a motion to refer to FEC with no condition as substituted. Second by Norwood, if you can please open the vote. Motion to approve as substituted with no recommendation to forward, to forward to the Finance Executive Committee.
The vote is open.
I just want to make it very clear to you all that I will be speaking to y'all between now and tomorrow.
The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays, two abstentions. This item is forwarded with no recommendation on substitute.
Thank you.
This takes us to item number six, 25-01133, in ordinance by Councilmembers Matt Westmoreland, Michael Julian Bond, Esha Collins, Jason Winston, Amir Farokh, Byron D. Amos, Jason Dozier, Liliana Bakhtiari, Alex Wan, Mary Norwood, Andrea L. Boone, Marcy Carrey Overstreet, and Antonia Lewis, to adopt the Trails Atlanta Plan as the City of Atlanta's master plan for a citywide network of trails, to incorporate the Trails Atlanta Plan into the City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan, Plan A, and for other purposes. There has been a request to hold this item.
Got a motion to hold by Westmoreland, second by Bakhtiari, if you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. This item is held in committee. That takes us to Resolutions, 25R 3215, a resolution by Councilmembers Antonia Lewis, Michael Julian Bond, and Esha Collins, to establish the George Smith Legacy Commission to honor her dedication to community advocacy and infrastructure improvements in District 12 and for other purposes. This item requires a substitute to add language for creating basis.
I'll make a motion to bring forth the substitute.
Yes. The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you. May we have a motion to adopt on substitute?
I'll make a motion to approve as substituted. Is there a second?
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yays, six yays, zero nays. No. My apologies, five yays, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. That takes us to item number eight, twenty-five R. thirty-two sixteen, a resolution by Councilmembers Antonia Lewis, Matt Wes Morland, Andrea L. Boone, Michael Julian Bond, and Eche Collins to establish the Floyd Family Legacy Commission to honor their decades-long contributions to community empowerment, economic development, and entrepreneurship in the Pittsburgh neighborhood and District Twelve and for other purposes.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve. Second by Wes Morland. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number nine, twenty-five R. thirty-two seventeen, a resolution by Councilmembers Antonia Lewis, Michael Julian Bond, Matt Wes Morland, Eche Collins, Jason Winston, Byron D. Amos, Jason Dozier, Alex Wong, Andrea L. Boone, and Marcy Carter Overstreet to establish the Sakaya Smith Legacy Commission to honor her memory and advocate for community safety, pedestrian infrastructure improvements, and violence prevention initiatives in District Twelve and for other purposes. This item will also require a substitute to add the requirements to create a base.
Second, the motion to bring forth the substitute.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The substitute is before you.
Make it to, make a motion to approve as substituted. Is there a second? Second by Bakhtiari. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. This takes us to item number ten, twenty-five R. thirty-two eighteen, a resolution by Councilmembers Antonia Lewis, Byron D. Amos, Michael Julian Bond, and Eche Collins to establish the Anthony Tickman Jones Legacy Commission to honor his contributions to community engagement, mentorship, and social impact in District Twelve and for other purposes.
I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Wes Morland. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number eleven, twenty-five R. thirty-two twenty. The amendment changes the caption. May we have a motion to bring forth the amendment?
Second.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The amendment is before you. A resolution by Councilmembers Marcy Carter Overstreet and Andrea L. Boone, as amended by Community Development Human Services Committee, to formally recognize the Cascades Heights Commercial Historic District and for other purposes.
Councilmember, you can make a motion. It's your pick. A motion to approve by Boone. Second by Bakhtiari. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. That item is favorable as amended. Item number twelve, twenty-five R. thirty-two seventy-one, a resolution by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the Department of City Planning to enter into Amendment Number Two for the contract agreement number listed, Qualified Environmental Professional with C H A Consulting Incorporated, to increase the contract funding by an amount not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents and for other purposes.
Clemente.
Thank you, Jessica Clemente, with the Office of Zoning and Development, Department of City Planning, and I manage our E P A Brownfield Revolving Loan Fund Grant, and C H A is our Qualified Environmental Professional. The grant generates program income, so we wanted, we would like through this legislation to add program incomes funding to be able to conduct environmental assessments.
Any questions come in from colleagues? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
All right, thank you.
Second by Bakhtiari. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. That item is favorable. That takes us to Papers Held in Committee. Our first one is item number twenty-five, twenty-five oh ten sixty-seven, C D P twenty-four zero thirty-one, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the two thousand and twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at twenty-two twenty Bernard Road Northwest, parcel ID listed, also known as twenty-two twenty-six, twenty-two thirty, twenty-two thirty-four, twenty-two thirty-eight, twenty-two forty-two, and twenty-two forty-six Bernard Road Northwest, from the industrial land use designation to the single-family residential land use designation and for other purposes.
Questions from colleagues? Got most to approve by Wes Morland. We got a second by Boone. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Six yays, zero nays. That item is favorable. That takes us to item number thirty-five, twenty-five R. thirty-one sixty, a resolution by Councilmember Jason H. Winston authorizing to the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into contract, into the contract number listed, pools and splash pads, maintenance services with Stand Guard Aquatics Incorporated on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation in an amount not to exceed two million dollars and zero cents annually and for other purposes.
D P R Deputy Commissioner Boss.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of council. This legislation authorizes the city to enter a contract for swimming pools and maintenance services for splash pads. D P R submitted a formal request to solicit it, to solicit qualified proponents. Following a review and evaluation of the bid, Stand Guard Aquatics was determined to be the most responsive and responsible offer. Determining the agreement is for three years. It has two one-year renewals, not to exceed two million dollars annually. That also includes ad hoc repairs, chemicals, and supplies to operate the pools. We have twelve outdoor pools. We have six freestanding splash pads and four indoor natatoriums that this will serve. The six splash pads are scheduled to open on May first, with several pools scheduled to open Memorial Day weekend, which is May twenty-fourth, and we have a complete schedule of all of our pool openings currently online. We actually have that open and available already. This legislation being brought forward with a complete I P R report. My understanding is that was just completed, and it'll be attached to this document. Jasmine, I hope that's still the case, and we are also asking post-haste execution of this document, just because of the timeliness of the pool season. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
No, I understand. We have not seen the I P R report yet, but I understand that it is complete.
That's my understanding, yes.
I would make a motion to approve on the condition of receiving the I P R report before our council meeting next week. A second by Wes Morland. Any questions come in from colleagues?
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yays, zero nays. This item is favorable on condition. And Mr. Chair, that brings us to the end of our legislative item.
All right. Parting words come in from colleagues. Seeing none, we stand adjourned.